Good evening. Welcome to the Marquette City Commission Meeting for Monday, February 13th, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner DePietro.
Here.
Commissioner Neame.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Sanon.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Keevila.
Here. All right, Commissioners, do we have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
I would move we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, do we have support?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Commissioner Neame. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, under announcements, I'm going to rattle off the dozen openings we have left on boards, and we've got quite a few people here tonight to welcome into their new roles, but we've got 12 openings left on our boards and committees, which is the least amount since I've been here for going on six years. So, Arts and Culture, we have two openings. Investment Advisory Board, one meeting. The Local Officers Compensation Commission, we have four openings, and that's a group that really meets very infrequently, so it really doesn't take a lot of someone's time if there's any interest there. The Market Housing Commission, one opening. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, one opening. The Sister City Advisory Committee, two openings. And Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, one opening. So, if you have interest in those, please, certainly, you can go to the website or see the City Manager's Office, ask any of your Commissioners for information, if you'd like, but we're getting close, let's see if we can fill them. So, that's all I have for announcements. We're going to move into our agenda. The first thing up is we have a presentation on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and that's being conducted by the Chair, Lynn Loxo. So, welcome, Lynn.
Thank you, Commissioners, and guests, and those on watching in the audience.
Lynn, can you make sure that the mic is on? There's a button there.
There we are.
Wonderful, thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. If we could switch to the slideshow. This is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Report to the City Commission as of this date. It details mostly information from our activities in the past year. I applaud the Commission for seeking these reports from its various boards and committees because this is, I think, a new and very important way for you to stay informed about what some of the issues are facing these committees. The background of the group is here on this slide. The former Chair, Jeremy Pickens, his term recently expired, and despite my best intents and attempts to recruit him back onto the board, he's not chosen to re-enlist so far. We do have one opening, and tonight we expect to inaugurate another member to start a new term. The purpose and goals of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is primarily to guide the implementation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And as part of doing that is to ensure that recommendations are supported by the community and meet City Commission-approved policy goals. One of the very important things of the recent Parks and Recreation Master Plan is the establishment of goals for setting policy for the administration of our very important Parks and Recreation opportunities here in the city of Marquette. This past year, the Commission approved an advisory plan, a master plan for Parks and Recreation that will span the next five years, and this is going to be an important advisory and planning tool, a policy tool. And amongst a number of public hearings, budget figures for up to $6.4 million in capital projects were prioritized over the next five years, and also began an important discussion on regional recreation needs beyond the borders of the city of Marquette with neighboring townships and other municipalities. In the next year, we intend to support the ongoing work to apply for and obtain gold medal certification by the National Recreation and Parks Association, or NRPA. We will be refining master plan actions, including evaluating fee structures to support a more comprehensive cost recovery plan, supporting the development of the policies that were identified in the master plan that needed to be developed. The master plan itself doesn't actually set the policy, but identifies policies that need to be written, and we will hope to provide some input into developing those policies for use by the city. There is the capital and action plan, as well as using the advisory board in our capacity to evaluate and endorse ideas that are important to the residents of the city of Marquette. And of course, we wish to support regional recreation authority discussions. Some of the issues that we wish to make you aware of, and certainly you are aware of the Hartwood Forest land and the intent to develop a recreational authority to advise the development of that important property, the regional recreation authority discussions, and the exploration of the possibilities of economies of scale among these different municipalities, and as with many departments in the city and in public administration throughout the state, insufficient funding of operations. And so, some of the methods that will be evaluated are the pricing policies for cost recovery, looking at the abandonment of facilities that were identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and evaluating facility use by non-residents and the impacts that that has. But one of the most important pieces identified in the citizen surveys and in the master plan, in addition to our very important trails, systems, is the preservation of our public shoreline. Further issues include promotion of Marquette as a year-round destination with programs and special events, which, we have many of them, and I just don't think we can do enough to promote them. And then, of course, our facilities and our trails. And there have been a number of hearings as well on Presque Isle Park, its harbor, its marina, its maintenance, and the improvements that are planned in the phased implementation. That is a very brief overview, and I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Can you talk a minute about the gold medal process and what that means?
We are fortunate to have with us tonight the gentleman that is actually doing the gold medal application for us, for the NRPA. Sean is here in the audience, and he, if you want to come up for a second, Sean, you can probably explain in more detail.
Come on up, Sean.
He's done a great deal of work in investigating and evaluating. We had so many things to choose from that could be put on this application, and I think he's done a wonderful job of pulling out the most important. Sean?
Well, the gold medal application is pretty much the highest award you can win for Parks and Recreation Administration, and basically what it is, is it's a comprehensive application that has us go over, like, nine different elements of Parks and Recreation and what we do in the community, including unique recreational offerings, challenges we've had to overcome, and how we've made ourselves accessible to different special populations, such as children and the elderly, and a couple other different criteria that, sorry, that just show what we've done and how exemplary of a department we have in the city.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Looks like you're off early. Thank you again, Lynn, and thank you for stepping up into the chair role, we appreciate it. Jeremy served on that board for a number of years and did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a proclamation. It's National Engineers Week. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas engineers use their professional scientific technological knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to solve problems, and whereas engineers have helped meet the major technological challenges of our time from rebuilding damaged infrastructure due to natural disasters, to designing innovative ways to replace our aging infrastructure, and whereas engineers plan, design, and direct the manufacture or construction of nearly everything we interact with on a daily basis, from computer microchips to highways, roads, and bridges, residential and commercial buildings, to automobiles and airplanes, and whereas engineers are needed today and in the near future to design and develop crucial infrastructure, including but not limited to roads and bridges, water and sewer utilities, levees and waterways, and universities and schools, and whereas not only is a diverse and vigorous engineering workforce needed, but we also need to encourage young men and women to pursue the field of engineering as a career. And whereas National Engineers Week provides professional engineers, committee groups, teachers, parents, and students with the opportunity to interact with and learn about the many facets of the engineering profession through special education programs, and whereas National Engineers Week aims to increase the understanding of and interest in engineering and technology careers, and it also aims to promote literacy in mathematics and science, and whereas National Engineers Week is celebrated during the week of George Washington's birthday to honor the contribution that our first President of the United States, a military engineer and land surveyor made to engineering. Now therefore, I, John P. Keevila, Mayor of the city of Marquette, hereby proclaim the week of February 19th through February 25th, 2012, as Engineers Week in the city of Marquette in conjunction with the celebration of National Engineers Week dated this 13th day of February 2012, and sign, John P. Keevila, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Dave. All right, next up is Boards and Committees, and if you are here as a new board member, could you please meet me up at the lectern? Looks like we've got the full slate, so I am going to, I know several faces, several are new to me, so I'm going to call you out in the order that we have them listed in the program here. Cynthia Hoffman. Cynthia, come on up. Cynthia is the newest member of the Sister City Advisory Committee, so we've got a city of Marquette pin for you, and we thank you for coming tonight and volunteering to serve.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're part of the, probably the largest graduating class here in city history, so be proud of that. Frank Richardson. Is Frank here? Not here, okay. Jocelyn Bassi. Jocelyn, welcome. We have a city of Marquette pin for you, and Jocelyn is now on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, so thank you again for volunteering. Faye Bowers was unable to make it tonight, she's going to be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Gary Moran. Gary, welcome, and here's a pin for you. Gary is the newest Planning Commission member, very, very important group, so thank you for your service. Taylor, there's Taylor. Taylor Clip is a Planning Commissioner now, so thank you. Sean Pengleyz.
Yes.
Sean is a Planning Commissioner as well, so.
Thank you very much.
For the city Marquette pin, thank you. And one more, Elizabeth Roberts. No, two more Planning Commissioners, Elizabeth Roberts. There you go.
Thank you.
And Heather Dombrowski, Planning Commissioner. Boy, we've got to run on Planning Commissioners. This city might look a lot different in the coming years, so. Liz Grill. Liz, Board of Review, and welcome back.
Thank you.
I know you've served many times before, so thank you. And Taylor Tillotson. Last but not least, Traffic Advisory Committee, so thank you for volunteering. So, how about that, ladies and gentlemen? That's a full house, thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Neame just mentioned we've got a quorum of Planning Commissioners, so we'll have to try to keep you isolated out there. There were several other new members that were unable to make it tonight, so we'll make sure they get their pins and even maybe have a chance to get them back here. So moving on, we've got a couple of appointments. We've got Susan Tulffson of the Market County Transit Authority as a Market City Designee for a term ending 12/31/14, and Tessa Matson, Market Housing Commission, for a term ending 2/12/13. Commissioner Neame?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we appoint Susan Tulffson to the Market County Transit Authority or refer her to the County Board for Appointment for a term ending December 31, 2014, and appoint Tessa Matson to the Market Housing Commission for a term ending February 12, 2013.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Neame, any comments?
I'd just like to thank these two people for being willing to volunteer their time on behalf of the city.
All right, Commissioner Stonehouse? Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. And we have one reappointment, Mr. Walter Anderson, Board of Review, for a term ending 2/115. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I move to reappoint Walter Anderson to the Board of Review for a term ending 02/01/15.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro supports. Any additional comments?
Only thanking Walter for serving.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
I concur. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I'll concur myself. Walt served for a long time in that position, does a great job, so thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, we are to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. So if there's anyone here wishing to speak, I ask that you give your name and physical address for the record.
Dan Vazetti, 600 Forest Park Drive.
Good evening. We just wanted to make a couple of comments before you get started this evening. The first is, in reading the minutes of the last commission meeting at which we spoke with you, there's a portion in the minutes where it summarizes comments by Mr. Stackowitz, and it sort of conveys that Forest Park Drive is a new, not Forest Park Drive, I'm sorry, Westland Drive is a new street. I don't really think that was his intention, but it's in the section that's titled "Addition of Westland Forest Park Drive." He, Mr. Stackowitz, said, in his view, "This is a civil matter," and noted that this area has not been accepted into the city's street system as yet. And I just want to make sure that it's clear in the minutes and clear to all of you that the portion of Westland Drive that is in question is the portion of Westland Drive that's been in existence for, I think, close to 40 years. It's not the new portion. Secondly, a little higher up, it's summarizing what I said, and I'm not exactly sure what my words were, but it says, "Whereby contrary to the earlier adopted motion, they, the Planning Commission, found that the addition of Westland Drive is no longer warranted." And that is not actually the case. The Commission didn't actually come to that conclusion, I think, because following our discussions and listening to you at the meeting, I did go to the open office hours that your city manager offers at the library last Wednesday, and he was very kind to spend some time with me discussing the issue and explaining the city processes. And at that point, Mr. Vida explained that there's a great likelihood that our situation would have to go through the entire step process that the city uses to accomplish projects. And so that, of course, was rather disturbing because he suggested it might take two years or more. So, I spent some time researching the city website and looking back into the minutes of the City Commission and the Planning Commissions, and I think the most significant items were in the Planning Commission, where in the Planning Commission, well, there were no minutes posted yet for the February 7th meeting, so I really can't speak for that, but that was after the meeting at which we were discussing the issue. At the January 17th meeting, there's no mention of the Westland Drive or any of that issue in those minutes. In the minutes for January 3rd, it is mentioned, but only on page four and only in comments at the end of the meeting. It identifies D. Stensis stated that D. Stackowitz will be presenting the Westland Drive project to the City Commission on Monday night. Doesn't indicate any direction there. S. Laurie stated that with the Enright-Horrocks Development Project no longer in existence, the Westland Drive recommendation would no longer hold true because part of the recommendation was to accommodate that development. And the next item on the minutes is adjournment. So, I would conclude that the city Planning Commission did not take any action, did not discuss or vote on a motion to change that. And then, when you research further back.
Ma'am, you're over the time, and we do have another five-minute portion coming up.
Okay.
We can allow you to finish it if that's okay.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. I thought I could get it in three minutes.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Okay, we will move then to the consent agenda. City Clerk, do you want to read the two items on there?
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the January 30, 2012 commission meeting, and Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $823,637.83.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have support?
Support.
Commissioner DePietro supports. Comments? Commissioner Ryan?
Very short, very routine items, no further comment.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Concur. No further comment.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. First up, under New Business, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding the water rate study. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, on December 31st, 1982, the city of Marquette and the Charter Township of Marquette entered into a 20-year water supply agreement with a renewal option thereby replacing an agreement adopted in 1970. Following a dispute litigated in Circuit Court, the township exercised its right to renew the agreement for an additional 20 years. A 1987 amendment to paragraph 6 of the agreement addresses a periodic three-year review of charges for services to be conducted by an independent consultant to determine, excuse me, to determine whether or not adjustments to the rates are indicated. The most recent rate study was conducted in 2006. City and township staff worked to develop a mutually agreeable RFP document. Nine firms submitted proposals. The proposals were independently evaluated by the Market Township Manager and their Superintendent of Public Works, along with the city's Chief Financial Officer and the Superintendent of Water and Wastewater. The firms were rated on a predetermined matrix of factors and values, with emphasis placed on project understanding, relevant project experience, and key personnel to be assigned to the project. The selection committee met and unanimously agreed to recommend Baker-Tilly-Virco-Crouse LLP is the most qualified. The combined committee evaluations are attached. Virco-Crouse performed the last study in 2006. Their recommended rates were adopted by the city and the township, and their accounting recommendations were incorporated into the 2009 Revised Water Supply Agreement. The firm has a depth of resources with extensive prior utility rate consulting and working with joint agreements. Based on the proposed scope of work, the selection committee negotiated a not-to-exceed amount of $19,500 to provide professional services. Of this total, the city of Marquette would pay $9,750. The total fee in 2006 was $21,000. The Market Township Board approved this recommendation at their February 7, 2012 Township Board meeting. Fiscal effect, per the water supply contract, the cost of the rate study is shared equally between the city of Marquette and the Charter Township of Marquette. The city's portion would be $9,750 and is included in the FY 1112 Water Fund Budget. Recommendation, award a professional service agreement to Baker-Tilly-Virco-Crouse LLP for a not-to-exceed amount of $19,500 to conduct a water rate study for determining wholesale water rates, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, it's your pleasure. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we award a professional service agreement to Baker-Tilly-Virco-Crouse LLP for an amount not to exceed $19,500.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
All right, Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
Well, I think the clerk said it all, but basically, this is something that must be done. This firm is competent and credible. It's acceptable to both the city and the township. We have good working history with them, so it's also within our budget limitation, so it makes sense to move ahead on this recommendation.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No further comments.
All right, any further? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding M.DOT contract for McClellan Avenue Extension Project. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, during the fiscal year 2010-11 budget process, the Market City Commission approved funding for the extension of McClellan Avenue from Fair Avenue to Wright Street. Since this time, all required staff actions have been completed, and the project is ready for procurement. Bids were led for the project by M.DOT on February 3rd, 2012, with a planned spring construction start. Under the grant programs, M.DOT Category F and remaining federal demonstration funds, the city of Marquette administers the project and reimburses M.DOT for expenses over and above the grant amount. The next step in the process is the signing of these contracts with M.DOT. The city attorney has reviewed the contracts, which are available on the city website. Fiscal effect, the, excuse me, the execution of this contract will result in up to $11,167,423 in grant funding to the city of Marquette for the McClellan Avenue Extension. Recommendation, by resolution, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract with M.DOT for the McClellan Avenue Extension Project, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll go with the recommendation, that we approved the recommendation by resolution, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the McClellan Avenue Extension Project.
All right, thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Neame, support?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Well, this has been on the city's radar since around 1965, so I guess it didn't take us that long to get this project underway, so as long as M.DOT's got all their docs in a row, city of Marquette's got all their docs in a row, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neame?
Well, I think this grant is welcome to help us to pay the cost of extending McClellan Avenue, so certainly we ought to approve this contract.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick questions for staff. If you could quick- If you could quickly run through the math for me. By the way, this is written, I'm assuming that there's $1.167 million in grant funding. What's the exposure to the city? And is it within our budget amounts that we've categorized for this? And who was the low bid? Who was the winning bid? Not the low bid, who was the winning bid?
I can answer that, Commissioner. When all is said and done, the city will probably have to pay out about $800,000 towards this project. The low bidder was Oberstorf Construction. And what was your second question there?
How much do we have budgeted for this?
We originally had 2.5 or 2.9 million, so we got it covered.
We have a pheromone of contingency as well?
The $800,000 does cover about 6% contingency.
Are there any... I know the history of the project has been somewhat checkered with wetlands and whatnot. Are there any... In your professional opinion, are there any conditions that we may encounter that are somewhat questionable going into the project? I mean, really what I'm after is, are we likely to find this project to be on budget?
Yes, I would say it's on budget, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Maybe just for the benefit of people watching or even attending, maybe we can explain why this project is handled the way it is through the MDOT and the fact that they've awarded the bid, it's not something that comes before this commission.
Usually with grant funding, in this particular case with Category F, and then this congressional amount that was left over from McClellan Avenue that was extended to the south, MDOT usually gets involved with the administrative aspect of it, where they actually will bid it, and we will contract with them as far as they will pay the contractor, then we will reimburse the state for the monies that are left over that aren't included with the grant. Just standard procedure with MDOT with this.
And just one other question. The numbers we're talking about here, I assume these do not include funds we've already expended to purchase the land, for example, and things of that nature, or does it?
No, it does not.
This is just for construction?
Just for construction, yes.
Any other comments? Commissioner Schneider?
Well, I guess I just kind of wanted to explain why I would cast a no vote on this. And it's been something that I know has been in the plans and in disgust for many, many years. But I guess looking at where we might be in 50 years, I don't really see much point in adding another road that's going to cost more and more maintenance in the future, especially when gas gets more and more expensive in the future. It's not something that I want to block by any means, but I definitely think there's citizens that are concerned about us continually adding infrastructure to city development that might not be used in 20 to 50 years. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was publicly known when I say no, as kind of a surprise to this process that's been going on for so long.
All right, thank you. Well, Commissioner DePietro mentioned 1965 this was planned. I was negative four in that year, so that tells you how long that this has been on the radar. I think this is a key connector for the city and for traffic flow. I wholeheartedly support it. I think if everyone looks at what Seventh Street did when we connected that, someone made a comment and they said, you know, even the people that really are upset with the city all the time and never say anything good are happy with that project. So, you know, that really worked out well for the city. I see the same thing for this. It's really going to make a difference. You know, one of the big problems, we've said it before, with traffic flow in Marquette is the lack of connectivity. You know, we have a university here, smack dab in the middle of town that blocks some streets. We have the hospital that does the same. We have a lot of topography that interrupts roads, so we don't have a lot of true north-south or east-west routes. And so it ends up diverting traffic through a lot of neighborhoods and some busy streets. So I think this is a key project, and I'm glad to see it finally getting started. So with that, I will call... Oh, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'm sorry, Your Honor. One late comment if I can. This is really an important street for the city. And, you know, urban planning and planning in the city is always a challenge as you try and look over the next hill and see what's coming up and how you should prepare for it. And this, I think, is very clearly one of those instances where the street is really vitally needed. And I'm very happy that we're going to be able to finally do it. I look forward to standing there at the ribbon cutting when we... Next fall, when that first car does go through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Back in '72, '73, when McClellan Street was proposed to be put through from the ski hill to the bypass, there was many, many people objecting to this road, saying that it'd be detrimental to the area, that it would destroy all kinds of habitat and area, and that it would be a negative. And years later, some of those people that were really strongly against this project have homes in that area now. There's two schools in that area, and that is one of the best routes we have for truck traffic to head south into Sandstone Ship and Cross Road area. But without that road, that would have been just a two-lane old road like it had been for many years. Years from now, people are going to say, this is a nice area. I got a house on Wright Street and between Wright Street and Fairon and New McClellan. And, yes, this won't be a negative thing. This will be a positive for the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
One more question if I can, very quickly, either, I guess, to the engineer or to our city planner. What are we thinking about in terms of traffic control between McClellan and Fair Avenue? Obviously, this will present some challenges. Can you talk through that?
Right now, the plans have incorporated a traffic signal at Fair and McClellan. There'll be another traffic signal at Wright and McClellan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other comments, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Motion passes, six to one. Next up, number seven, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding city representative for the County Road Commission ad hoc transportation advisory panel. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the Marquette County Road Commission is requesting a city representative to participate in the board's ad hoc transportation advisory panel. Excuse me. The panel would work to establish safe, feasible, and prudent transportation corridors. The road commission has indicated that the panel would improve community relationships, enhance education and awareness of transportation issues through an open and transparent process. Minutes of the group's December 2nd, 2011 meeting are attached, and a copy of the February 2nd letter requesting city of Marquette participation. Fiscal effect, none by this action, although participation may result in policies that impact community development goals and capital improvement investments. Recommendation, consider appointing a city commissioner to the County Road Commission ad hoc transportation advisory panel, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. This recommendation, I'd like to consider appointing Commissioner Stonehouse to the County Road Commission ad hoc transportation advisory panel.
Okay, was that... You want to consider it, or do you want to make a motion to appoint him?
No, I want to make a motion.
Okay.
Sorry, senior moment.
It's okay, senior.
Is that the issue on the table, Your Honor?
Is to appoint a city commissioner.
Okay, all right.
So, do we have support? Commissioner Neme?
I'll support the motion, but I also have proposed an addition of the motion. I think we ought to have, in conjunction with the commissioner, as a member of the engineering department, because a lot of technical issues come up before this committee, and you really need someone who's familiar with those issues and our road programs, so I think you really need a...
Someone from the engineering department, either the city engineer or one of the engineers, or if someone else the city manager wants to designate, that'd be fine, too.
Sure. As, I guess, maybe offer this up, being that the road commission asked for a representative, I don't know if it behooves us to send two representatives, but maybe we can instruct staff to have someone from the engineering department attend the meetings as well. Is that fine?
That's fine with me.
Okay. I don't know that we need to do that as a motion. We can, we can do an amendment to the motion, or the city manager says he's got that, so... All right. Commissioner?
I support the motion nonetheless.
Okay. So we have a motion, it's supported. Commissioner DePietro, any comments?
Well, just that I really believe that Commissioner Stonehouse would represent the citizens of Marquette very strongly. He's voiced his opinion in the past, showed his thoughts and concerns on this issue, and he would be an excellent representation for the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Neme?
I have nothing further, Your Honor, except maybe perhaps to ask Commissioner Stonehouse if you'd be willing to accept the appointment.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes, I would accept the appointment. Obviously honored by it, and I'll certainly do the very best I can. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the city.
My comment is that I thank Commissioner Stonehouse for being willing to volunteer.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to say I'm not going to support the motion, and it's not because of Commissioner Stonehouse. I don't believe we should be appointing a commissioner to this body. I think we should be appointing someone from the city administration. This committee has a pretty broad agenda. I don't say we're violating the charter, but I don't think it's in the best interest to have a commissioner representing the interests of the seven commissioners who sit here, because they cannot speak for the seven commissioners. I think someone from administration can go there, can represent the city, can make it clear what policies we have, can bring back to this commission any need for policy decisions. But I don't believe that one commissioner can represent the seven of us. I know they can't represent me. And unless this city has taken a firm position on some issue, what is that commissioner going to do? He's going to represent himself.
Well, I guess I'll take exception to that. I don't know that a member of the staff can represent the seven of us as well. It was the road commission that asked that it be an elected official. We also have many representatives that serve in a similar capacity. We have a couple of them representing us on the Hartwood and the Rec Authority Group.
I have concerns about that, too, but I don't believe they necessarily asked for an elected official. All areas are not represented by elected officials. There are people besides elected officials on that committee. There are business people, there's the Marquette Township Manager. Again, I'm not saying that a city official, a staff person can represent this commission, but they can represent the city of Marquette. I don't believe one commissioner can do that on issues that have not come before this
Commissioner Neme?
I can understand Commissioner Ryan's trepidation, but I guess the way I look at it is if the commissioner had questions about our policy, he would bring that back just as a staff member would, that it wouldn't be the personal opinion of the commissioner representing the city.
Well, Commissioner DePietro in his announcement said that he's heard Commissioner Stonehouse's opinions, and he believes he will represent us by what he says. So, again, I'm not going to debate it. I've made my position. I just don't believe we should be represented by a commissioner. And we have a council-manager form of government. I believe we should be represented by a city official.
Any other comments? Commissioner Schneider?
You know, I will definitely support Commissioner Stonehouse's appointment to this ad hoc committee, and I think that it's more of a liaison position than anything representing us. I do have any concerns, or many concerns, over one commissioner representing seven. You know, two or three, I think, can actually kind of suss out a few different ideas of what the commission as a whole feels, but not necessarily represented in any sort of vote. I do think that a staff member should be working with Commissioner Stonehouse on this, just to be able to bring up some of the engineering points that might come up. But as far as the County Road Commission ad hoc transportation advisory panel, I have some fairly big concerns with the panel as a whole. The one meeting that I did attend, I listened to some of the members express that they don't want any groups that are monitoring the environmental well-being of the road going in. You know, I think that the commission will do a relatively decent job, but when I hear people say, "We don't want local environmental organizations coming in to the meetings," I get concerned about transparency issues. So I just ask that whether it's staff or whether it's a commissioner that's going, that that be paid attention to as well, and hopefully we can get a few more parties involved.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Oh, please understand, I'm certainly uncomfortable with this for many of the reasons stated, because, you know, you're not really quite sure where this group's going to go. You're not really quite sure how it's going to get there. You look at the guest list on the group, and the terms of the members already appointed, and again, it certainly has the opportunity, I think, to be a contentious organization. And that certainly would not be my intention to be part of that contentiousness. But if the commission wishes to appoint me to go there and represent the commission in terms of gathering information and bringing that information back, I'll be happy to do that. Certainly, as Commissioner Ryan indicated, it's very difficult to have one commissioner represent the commission without having a portfolio in his pocket of what the commission has voted on already in terms of what they want to see happen, and you really can't do that because very often you don't see the original questions coming back. So it's much like when we receive a request for a letter of support or proclamation in favor of a project. In that case, we all have an opportunity to see it. We all have an opportunity to make our beliefs or our thoughts known on it and in turn take a vote. Obviously, a little bit different in this regard, but I think it's worth taking a look at, and if it's something that we don't feel after my having attended a couple of meetings that I should be there, then I'm quite happy not to be. I think it's really a genuine effort on the part of the Marquette Road Commission to try and gather a bunch of people in a room and move forward. And all we can do is try it and see if it works or not.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, six to one. Next up is public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person, and again, state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Vazetti, 600 Forest Park Drive.
Dan Vazetti, 600 Forest Park Drive.
So when I was running too long, I was just going back through the minutes of some of the planning commission meetings, and in the April 5th, 2011 meeting, the situation is discussed on pages three and four of the minutes, but on four, the commission did pass a motion. It was moved by T. Hangustow, supported by S. Laurie, and unanimously carried eight to zero, that after review of the proposed cross-sections and associated background information for the 2012 Forest Park Drive storm sewer and road construction project, the planning commission finds that the proposed option with the modification of a seven-foot parking lane on one side of the street, two 11-foot driving lanes, the street alignment will be offset to accommodate possible future sidewalk, and that the reconstruction of Westland Drive up to the subdivision line be recommended for addition to the project with the cross-section as matching the street west to Forest Park subdivision, and the proposed project best meets the intent of the community master plan and hereby approves the street design with the above noted modifications. So I just wanted to point these out so that when the city staff is finished with their study and can come back to you with some possibilities to solve the problem, perhaps, you know, this solves the problem of Westland Drive of the whole step process, just as Forest Park Drive was. And so whatever conclusion... And so whatever conclusions the engineers' office and the planners' office are able to offer in terms of the best way to accomplish the goals in that area can be done right along with the Forest Park Drive project in the 2012 construction period. And that's all, we just wanted to ask. We are very grateful that the city staff have been responsive to our emails, and very appreciative of the efforts of the city commission to give the staff time to find some solutions and to listen to our concerns.
Okay.
Your honor, would it be appropriate to just ask them to repeat the date of that? I believe she said 2000, I'm wondering if that is the correct date?
April 5, 2011.
2011, okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Boy, it just seems like there's something missing tonight. I just can't put my finger on it. Okay, we'll close public comment and move to city commission, commissioner comments. Commissioner Neme?
I have nothing, your honor.
Commissioner Schneider?
Just to thank everybody who had stepped up for various boards and committees, it was great to see a line all the way to the back wall over there. I really appreciate the citizen involvement. We still have a number of other vacancies that people can step up and get involved in, so if you're home and watching, please consider, check out the website, see the vacancies, and hopefully we'll see you up here soon.
Thank you. Commissioner Saint Ang?
Thank you, your honor. I have a couple of things, I guess, just some as pleasant reminders and some new requests. Excuse me. I realize it's only mid to late February, but spring will be here before we know it, and I know one of the issues that we discussed last year was relative to street striping. And I guess I'm just going to implore staff to make sure that we look at moving tho, that project up so that our streets are appropriately lined early in the summer as compared to at the end of the summer. In a lot of cases now, as I drive around the city, you can't see lines, you can't see parking areas, you can't see much. The other thing in, with street striping that I'm curious about is, I realize there are multiple options with regard to the materials that we use for striping. I wonder if there's maybe something on the market that would allow the striping to have a little bit longer life than what we currently don't seem to enjoy. But it's an issue, I think, that I've heard from a lot of people, especially last summer, about the lack of striping, and it's going to be here before we know it, so I'd like to see us pick up the pace and get on top of that. The other issue is just kind of a general reminder, I'm not sure where it stands, I know we've discussed it at the commission level with regard to what we've talked about or characterize as excess property, and the need to get some of this property back into commerce. I know we talked about possibly modifying the solicitation process for how we sell property, and I'd hate to see this important issue get kind of fumbled away into the normal day-to-day process of how we do business. I'd like to see us, and I think this was the consensus of the commission, and if I mischaracterize it, I apologize, but I thought we talked about doing a citywide RFP with no end date, that we would identify excess property, if you will, and put it out there and let citizens, developers, whatever the case may be, submit their ideas or plans for purchase with regard to kind of an open-end RFP. One of the other things that has come to light that I've been asked plenty of times about, and I don't have a good answer, I know it came in front of us only with regard to, I think, land use issues or property sale issues, I'm not sure, but it's the Mark Tran transfer station and the design of the building. I don't know if this is widely known or if it is on our city website, but I'd love to see some rendering or something of what that monolith is going to look like when it's done. I've just, it befuddles me who designed it and how they come up with that design in that location of town, but I don't quite understand. And I realize there's not much we can do about it, but I'd like to know what it's supposed to look like when it's done, because I don't like what it looks like now. The other issue I'd like to see, this is strictly an administrative issue, I believe we've concluded or we're about to conclude, or maybe there's just paperwork left, but the Island Beach Road project, it was one that we've chatted about at length here, and we finally stepped into the plate and funded the project. I'd like to see staff give at least the commission a summary report, nothing fancy of how the project turned out, any issues that might be outstanding, how it all played out. I've heard good things about the project, I've heard that there were some issues that needed to be resolved, I heard nothing but kudos about the contractor that the city selected. But I think we owe it to ourselves to at least bring some of these major projects to conclusion, and it'd be nice to have some kind of summary report. Again, nothing, nothing inordinately fancy, just a simple summary, an email would suffice as to how the issue played out and how the, the project came to conclusion. The other issue, quite frankly, was the Westland Road issue. I wasn't here at the last meeting, and so I'm trying to do my best to catch up. Generally speaking, I don't know where it stands per se, if it's coming back to us or if we're going to deal with it in some capacity, but I think there's a message or there's a moral to the story in there, and that is, as we contemplate putting property back into commerce from a development perspective, we have to have some reasonable teeth in the process by which we allow developers to proceed with land development projects, and we have to at least safeguard the citizens in a general sense as to how those projects might play out or might not play out, as the case may be, as they go forward. So I, I trust that city staff recognizes, you know, if you will, not that it's their fault, but just a lesson to be learned going forward as to how these projects might fall apart, even with the best of intentions early on. And I think if we can come up with something reasonable with regard to obviously the resolution of this issue, but also recognition that, that as we do these projects going forward, that, again, I'm not looking for a huge amount, I'm not a big fan of governmental red tape by any means, but at the same time, we have an obligation to make sure that the best laid plans actually come to fruition, or at least reasonably come to fruition, and we don't leave somebody hanging in the, in the weeds with, with a project that just went south. So with that, I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to present these ideas. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, your honor. I want to bring up the upcoming UP 200, it's going to have their Midnight Dog sled race scheduled start at 7:10 Friday, February 17, in downtown Marquette in front of the Mining Journal. And talking with Anna Sanford, she's one of the volunteers that is asking for volunteers for this race, and expecting a large crowd of spectators, they're requesting volunteers for two categories. One is to work the crowd control, and the other's to help mushers unloading the dog teams and loading back up in the trailers after the race. Again, we're asking volunteers to help with these two very crucial positions, and for anybody wishing to volunteer, contact Anna Sanford at 869-4827 as soon as possible this week. I'd also like to recognize some city employees on their years of service. On February 19th, Barry Just of the Park and Recreation Department and Engineer-Tech-Mac Cos will both have 10 years of service. On February 20th, Fire Department Engineer/Firefighter Dan Pruner will have 15 years, and Assistant City Engineer Greg Borzek will have five years. On February 24th, Patrol Officer and Animal Control Officer Dave Schneiderhand will have 20 years of service. Again, we congratulate these employees on their years of service and with their department. And I would also like to remind everyone of the upcoming 28th Annual Pigs and Heat fundraiser, which is scheduled for Wednesday, March 14, at the Lakeview Arena. Faceoff will be at 7:00 PM, so please get out, stop by your local police or fire department, purchase your hockey tickets, it's only $1 per ticket, and you can cheer on your favorite law enforcement officer or your favorite Marquette County Fire Department. Please remember, this is for a worthy cause and has helped many families the last 27 years that have been affected during fire emergencies. And also, I'd like to thank all the department heads, city manager Bill Faidah and staff for having a great open house this past week at the Citizens Forum. All the departments had all their equipments out there, the police had their equipment, fire department, engineering, water, sewer, so you got to see what the old pipes really looked like. So this was very awesome for the citizens to come in at the Citizens Forum at the Lakeview Arena, to see all these things, and many, many positive comments came from residents and visitors from outside the city. So I just want to say a job well done by all personnel involved. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I guess first of all, I'd like to somewhat concur with Commissioner Saint Ang and his concern about when development occurs that we have the proper tools in place to make sure that citizens are not affected in a negative way. Having said that, I also want us to be developer-friendly, too. So it's a very, it's a very fine line, and I understand that. It's not a, it's not an easy path for, for our city officials to follow, because we do from time to time get feedback that, you know, it can be difficult to get things done in Marquette. And I, I think that's changing, and I think that's a good thing. So it's, as I say, I admit it's a, it's a fine line, but I, I think there are ways that we can work with developers, see development happen, be positive about those developments, but also include the safeguards that protect the citizens as well. I'd also like to say I'm really pleased with McClellan Avenue going through. I'm not really concerned about 50 years in the future, but I am concerned about right now, and I know that this is going to really have a positive effect. There's a tremendous amount of traffic that comes into our city from the west end traveling to north Marquette, and presently, they come through Washington Street and come south on, on McClellan, and a lot of that traffic, I think, can now come through this new route. So I, I think it will actually improve, improve traffic flow considerably with all of the, the traffic we have coming from the western part of Marquette County. I think that's a very good thing. I, I too would like to thank all the volunteers, it was very nice to see so many new people lined up and some new faces, some young faces, a good mixture of people, and I think that's good for the future of Marquette.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Let me just, I guess, speak to one issue, and that's, you know, we do have the dog sled race coming up on, on Friday, Friday night, start time 7:00 PM downtown. And there's been a little concern out there that the race obviously is starting in Marquette, but we've got to put them on trucks and move them out somewhere else, and then they're going to really do the race. I wanted to just make sure everybody understood two things. Number one, what we see downtown Marquette on Friday night will be exactly what we've always seen. Same number of teams, same excitement, same cheering, same route going out of the city. It will be, just become transparent when they kind of disappear in the gloom and then get taken out to Willow, or to, to Chatham, to, to really start the race from there, based on snow conditions. What we don't realize, though, is that the famous race in Alaska, the Iditarod, the longest sled dog race in the world, the one that in fact the Marquette, or the UP 200 is a qualifier for, and more so this year than in previous years, the importance of it because of other races being canceled due to lack of snow. So the UP 200 critical for a lot of people. But here's the point, in Iditarod, the Iditarod starts in downtown Anchorage, and it goes through the center of the city in a ceremonial start, and then they put all the dog teams into the trucks, and they take them out town, outside town to a little burg called Willow, and the next day, they start the actual race. So what we're doing in Marquette is exactly what they do in the world famous Iditarod, the same thing, and those folks up in, in Anchorage will be seeing the same type of start that we'll see in downtown Marquette. So I just want everybody to, to please understand that. Should be a perfect night, too, they're talking temps between 20 degrees and 30 degrees with snow showers. So a warm night to be out, especially for a dog sled race and kick them off right. That's all, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to talk about some events downtown, too. We heard this week the announcement of the Marquette Bike Jam, the replacement for Superior Bike Fest. I think this is great. It's a great opportunity for Marquette and the surrounding area. There's going to be a lot of different races through the three days, so look forward to that coming up, June 29, 30, and July 1. Also new this year, we're going to have a Model A convention, the North American Convention of Model As happens, I believe, every two years, the last one, I think, was in Vancouver, so you're going to see a lot of old Fords in this town. And then also sailboats, the National Ensign Regatta is here, held this summer in Marquette as well. So some pretty cool things going on in this community, as well as all the other events and festivals that we routinely have, so gear up, it's going to be a great summer here. City manager?
Thank you, your honor. I have nothing further this evening.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.